Welcome, welcome to the January 2nd, 2024 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. The agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on an item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to the commission manager, Holly Hennies, located at the lower right side of the dials. It's time we call the meeting in order, and I'll have Commissioner Drew do the moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Drew. The first item of business for the commission is at the beginning of the new year is the elections of officers. At this time, I'd go to the commission and look for a motion to decide if they want to do a roll call, a voice vote, or a secret ballot.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I think the voice vote would be the most appropriate. That'd be my motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Hancock to do a voice vote, seconded by Mr. Drews. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the chair position. I'd look for a motion for somebody to nominate for chair.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Travis Lassiter.
We have a nomination for Travis Lassiter.
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
I would make a motion to continue with Commissioner La Croix as chair.
And we have a motion, our nomination for La Croix.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I think why I'm choosing Travis is that he has a respect for doing the people's business openly, honestly, and fairly, and he respects and listens with an open mind. And at this point, I don't think since we've had leadership the last two years that that's been happening. So I will be saying no to La Croix and yes to Travis Lassiter.
Thank you. Is there any other further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I'm also going to be a no to the, to La Croix. I've been thinking about this a lot. You know, this board has had a lot of challenges lately, and a lot of it stems from poor communication and things of that nature, and we do need someone to lead. And so I do believe that we need to have a little bit of a change so that we can lead, have something moving forward in the right direction, communicating with not only the board, but also with the public. So that's why my, my no vote will be for La Croix.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. Any further comments? First on the agenda was Mr. Lassiter. All in favor of Mr. Lassiter as chair, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails two, three to two. Next on the agenda is La Croix. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with La Croix, three to two. Mr. Lassiter and Mrs. Hancock with the no descending votes. Next, we have vice chair.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I think Travis Lassiter. I think we've had the same leadership for a couple of years, and it's time for a change. And again, as a leader, I think Travis does the people's business openly, honestly, and fairly, and he respects and listens to all people on this board as well as the public. I don't think that's been happening with the leadership we've had again for the last two years, and I think you should give him a chance to try to make a difference on this team and change the perspective of the commission by another voice in leadership besides the same three we've had for the last couple of years.
So we have a nomination for Lassiter. Any further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would nominate Commissioner Roskinak as vice chair.
Okay, we have Roskinak and Lassiter nominations for vice chair. First on our list is Mr. Lassiter. All in favor of Mr. Lassiter as vice chair, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails, three to two. Next, we have Commissioner Roskinak for vice chair. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with three to two with, with Lassiter and Hancock with the descending Next, that brings us up to item number five, motion to establish commission salary. I'll go to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I think we determined during budget, during our budget cycle this last year, that commission, the appropriate area would be to stay with the same as the employees. I think that's four percent is what that represents. And so I would move to set the 24 salary for the Pennington County Board of Commissioners at $1,164.80 biweekly.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinak.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
So we have two types. We have compensation of county commissioners with salary of county commissioners, or we could do per diem and salary. I believe, I think I've taken per diem once since I've started. I do travel all over to represent the people of Pennington County. I think we're paid enough salary that that per diem is not needed to be added. So you can do SDCL seven dash seven dash three with compensation with per diem or salary, or you can do SDCL seven dash seven five salary of county commissioners through, I'm sorry, the seven dash seven dash three with per diem and salary, or you can just do salary on seven dash seven dash five, which makes sense to me.
Thank you, Ms. Hancock. Any further discussion?
So that would be my amendment, or not amendment, my substitute motion to our salary.
Could you please clarify?
Then I believe the salary of county commissioners should be set forth of what we have at the, I don't have the rate in front of me, what Commissioner Drews just said, and that we are paid enough so that we wouldn't need the per diem at this point as county commissioners.
So for clarification, you're saying okay with the four percent, $1,164.80 biweekly, but you'd like to amend it to, to delete the per diem.
Per seven dash seven dash five.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second substitute motion. So it brings us back to the original motion. Any further comments before I speak?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I just want to understand and clarify that. Whenever I was listened to, seven dash seven dash three is compensation to county commissioners, but the seven dash seven dash five is basically a salary that is established if we don't agree on a total salary, which then reduces it down. That's what I just want to make sure that I was understanding that was in that motion.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
As I understood, it was the Board of County Commissioners may determine the salary of commissioners, such shall be set by the Board, County Commissioners at the first regular agenda of each, each year. If the, and then it says if the Board doesn't, fails to determine salary, then the salary of the county commission in one year is. So if you, if you don't set a salary, which I'm setting at what we're setting today, then it will be set by the other one, two, three, four on this seven dash seven dash five, Commissioner Lassiter. I say that because, again, I believe we're getting paid a salary. That per diem adds up to some people four or five thousand extra a year. So that's a lot of money extra for commissioners to be paid, plus we get flights and different stuff to go to these different, and compensation for those back to us that there's no reason for per diem when you're just, you were elected to do a job, and if you couldn't do that job without having mileage and everything else for everything you do without using that salary for your job, I think it's, for me, I have taken per diem once, and like I said, I've represented the people all over in everybody's district in the state as well, and seem to believe that that salary is sufficient without the per diem.
Mr. Lassiter, follow up?
I can follow up.
Okay. Mr. Drews.
I would, I would be opposed to not being entitled to the per diem for the commission. I think that, you know, there's, there are some benefits that are provided to commissioners, including like health insurance, if you want to be on that, which is a cost for the county. There's, you know, if you're, if you're traveling and doing business on behalf of the county, you are offered mileage and per diem. So I would support the remains as, as it is.
Mr. Drews. Thank you. My, my comment is, along the same lines as Mr. Drew, this has been brought up before, and I think, you know, I'm one of the ones when I'm doing NACO or something along those conferences, I pay my own per diem. I don't charge for, for taxis or food or anything along those lines, but if I'm traveling to peer or for other business, I do put mileage on. We do have some commissioners who have to travel quite a ways to get to the meetings and do the business of the public, and so that's where I think the per diem is important because that does add up to be quite a bit for travel costs to and from. So I will support the motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair. Clarification? So for salary and mileage, that's one thing, per diem is a totally different pay, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm clear.
Okay. So with that on the floor, we do have a motion to approve the 2024 salary of Pennington County Board of Commissioners at $1,164.80 biweekly. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no from Commissioner Hancock.
No, I had a no on that one.
You had a no also?
It may not have been loud enough.
Okay, I didn't hear it. Two noes, one from Lassiter and one from Ms. Hancock. Next, we comes up to items number six, review and approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us up to the Board of Commissioners consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 19th, 2023. Number eight is to designate the Hill City Prevailers, the Pennington County Current, and the Rapid City Journal as the three official legal newspapers for 2024. Number nine is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Mr. John James to the 2024 Extension Advisory Board. Number 10 is to approve the 2024 Humane Society contract. Number 11 is to designate Wells Fargo Bank of South Dakota and First Interstate Bank as the primary active depositories for 2024 pursuant to SDCL seven dash 20 dash 13. Number 12 is to acknowledge the Public Depository Liability Quarterly Report. Number 13 is to approve the numerical correction to the vacation accrual rate for the four to five-year range to reflect 5.62 hours in Policy 4 dash 1 vacation benefits, as previously approved on December 19th, 2023, and remaining effective with the first pay period of 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any members in the public who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? See none? Is there any commissioners who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? See none? I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion or comments? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would like to see us recognize, is John James here? Okay, John's not here. I thought he was here. I was going to ask to recognize him as, on the extension board as our appointment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Drews. That brings us up to item 14, the 2024 Extension Advisory Board of Appointments.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Move to appoint Patty Bruner, Matthew Oden, and Heather Chambliss to the 2024 Extension Advisory Board and approve the chair's signature to warrant their appointments.
Second.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Lassiter.
Could I still have the floor, sir?
Yep, Ms. Hancock.
Thank you. I've been involved with 4H and Patty Bruner and, and this group for a while. Patty's smiling back there. What a wonderful group, what a wonderful opportunity for the kids. Like I said, it's a diversion program that is well used by many of our Pennington County city folk as well as our county, country people, country folk. Anyway, our rural and our unrural people. So with this leadership, as we see, has only been growing and growing in the 4H programs and teaching our kids the basic qualities of moving ahead and, and life skills, and I appreciate everything they've done for them. So thank you for what 4H does for our, our children and their futures.
Is there any further comments from the board? I will say, after being a liaison for quite a while, Patty and Matt, you guys do a great job, and I see you've got the notice out to, to get more members. We just appointed John again, John James, and, and you can go up to seven members, and your guys' dedication is like second to none. I mean, you guys put in a lot of hours and, and time, personal time into what you are doing, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and so we appreciate it. We do have approval on the appointments on the floor. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. You guys have any comments?
I just have one.
Come on up. Come on up.
Oh, yeah, come up.
I apologize. Normally, I let you speak before we take the motion, but...
She's the quiet one of the groups, so be ready for speech. Just kidding. First of all, thank you for supporting the program.
You're welcome.
The years have proven that what it does for kids and how they grow up to be productive members of society. We are running into the same thing as every other business runs into, is that I'm looking behind me and there's not a lot of people stepping up to the spot. So that's where we are right now, canvassing younger people to be on this board and support the program. So I just wanted you to know that. We are really trying to get other people involved, so we're not the only faces you have to look at.
Thank you, Patty.
No, I just wanted to say thank you, and, and thank you for the support of Pennington County 4H. It really is truly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you both for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So that brings us up to items number 15, items from Auditor, and I'll recognize Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first thing that I have is the resolution to set the salaries for all of our election folks for 2024.
Ms. Hancock.
Cindy, can you tell me how you came to the numbers of each, like the superintendent precinct deputies, one cellphone stipend? Is that based on 1215-11 and 1215-7?
The commissioners get to set the, set these rates, and those are my recommended rates. We did increase them a little from last year. We increased school from 30 to 45. The superintendent's, there's another $30 a day. And I did then lay out some of the other ones that we have included, just not had in our resolution, so I did that this year. I expanded it a little bit.
Well, and I'm not against the rates, I just wondered how you determined the rates?
Tried to come up with a number that I think will work for everybody. How does that sound? That's what I had in my budget.
Okay. And then had it went up from the last couple of years? I can't remember what we charged last year, or was it less? Was it more last year or less?
It was, we increased it this year. I don't know that we'd increased it for a couple of years.
Are you having a hard time finding poll workers?
We have a pretty good list right now of folks, but there are occasions where we have problems finding them in specific precincts.
Okay.
It's going to be a challenge. 2024 is going to be a challenge. We increased the rate for our school because we are going to have probably a longer school than what we've had in the past. It usually runs about two hours. It will probably be three. We're kind of changing up a few of the things that we do, so I'm anticipating that school's going to be about three hours this year.
So you said you haven't really reduced the poll workers list, and you haven't had a problem finding them, so why would you increase it, I guess?
Anticipation of a trying year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Any further questions from the board presenting? If not, I'd look for the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
Move to approve the chair's signature for the 2024 Poll Workers Salaries Resolution.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. B, item B, transfer retail.
We have a transfer of the retail on-off malt beverage and South Dakota farm license from Country Corner to Antique Aces.
Is there any questions for?
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Move to approve the transfer of the retail on-off malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from Country Corner to Antique Aces Boutique.
Got a motion from Hancock, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
That's the renewal of the retail on-off sell liquor with Sunday sales for St. Patrick LLC.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
Move to approve the renewal of the retail on-sale liquor and Sunday sales license as presented for St. Patrick LLC and release the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? And I have no public comment request forms. With that being said, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yep.
Thanks, Cindy. Next, that brings us up to item number 16, items from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize Director Davis Purcell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Today, I just bring before you a request to authorize the bid award for the JSC roof replacement. On December 14th, we had seven bids, and the bid tab is attached for your review. B&amp;G recommends moving forward with Black Hills Roofing, which came in with a low bid of $137,360. And in my motion, I'm also asking for 10% discretionary spending in case we run into any issues with the project. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, David. Is there any?
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I'm not against this because JSC needs a roof replacement. Just a few questions, Superintendent Purcell. We said that if we did the roof replacement, what did we decide when we're on the building committee that would be short for 2024 on Buildings and Grounds because of roof replacements?
I, I do not have that number in front of me. I mean, for roof replacements, we weren't expecting to do all three that we had presented at first because we, we don't have the budget for that. We did come in considerably under what we had thought this would be, which was about $220 to $240.
Okay.
And it came in at $137. So we'll see what we can do with that additional money. Well, it's not additional money, but with that money, we can use for other capital project funds within our B&amp;G department.
I appreciate that, sir, because that's what I had thought, that it was going to be higher, and based on the shortage, we're trying to do this roof or any of the roofs for the future of 2024 with your budget, that that helps your budget by going under. So bottom line is, if it would have came around $240 or what you were saying, it sounded like you guys were going to be short, but this is helpful that it came out about $70,000 less. So appreciate that information, sir.
Thank you, David. And Mr. Roskinak.
My only, it's not a question, it's just a statement. It's encouraging to see that we had that many bids, because a couple of years ago, you'd probably been lucky to get one or two. So tells me that folks are probably getting a little bit hungrier out there.
Yeah, agreed. And out of the seven, only one was not local, so.
Yep. That kills. Roofing is a good company.
Mm-hmm.
We have them rough ours.
I, I agree with Mr. Roskinak on this. We've had a bunch of roofs that need to be replaced, but I think things have slowed down, and it's good to see that many, that kind of competition, so that's good to hear. Is there any further comments from the board? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Let's see, I turned the page before I made the motion, so I apologize. Sorry about that, Mr. Purcell. Let's see. Move to authorize Davis Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director, to sign the construction contact with Black Hills Roofing in the amount of $137,360 and have up to $13,700 discretionary spending should problems arise once the old roof is removed.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? I have no public comments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, it brings us to item 17, and these are items from Equalization.
Good morning. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have two abatement requests in front of you. One is an exempt entity that purchased a property partway through the year, and the other is a house that was removed from the property in the middle of the year.
Commissioners, have any questions for Shannon? You want to take these both up at once, one motion? Sounds like what the commission wants to do. There's no, Ms. Hancock.
Move to approve the abatement application for tax year 2022 for Community Enhancement II LLC parcel number 70017, $54,10608, and Aspen Meadows LLC parcel number 66224, $1,28838.
Second.
Motion made by Hancock, seconded by Roskinak. I have no public comments. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Shannon. Next, that brings us up to item number 18, items from Highway Department.
Good morning, Commission. Happy New Year. Up in front of you here is Rural Access Infrastructure Funding Award. So back in 2021, the legislature passed House Bill 1259, which established this fund to, for the, the small structures, we call them. There are culverts with an opening of 16 square feet or larger, which equates to about 54 inches in diameter if it's a, if it's a round culvert. Typically, there's not a lot of funding out there for these. Townships have a hard time replacing these culverts if they're on township roads because they're not on the MBI structure, and we're not necessarily responsible for them either. We're one of the few counties that have a use for these funds on our secondary roads in unorganized territory. A lot of the counties don't have secondary roads, so we have an opportunity to apply for this as we did back in October. Let's see here, I'm getting ahead of myself. We submitted the application in October 31st. They were due October 31st. We went through and scored this, as there were no other applications. In the past couple of years, we've sent out the information for this to the townships, and we have not received any five-year plans or any applications from the townships the past couple of years. The townships have to do a couple of different things to be eligible for this. They have to impose an annual, annual property tax levy pursuant to the South Dakota law 101228-2, or impose a tax levy opt-out pursuant to 101336. So I don't believe any of our, our townships have done that. I could be wrong, but that's probably the reason we haven't seen any applications for this. With that, we went through and scored our application and are recommending the grant award in the amount of $145,553. Uh, with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from?
Chair.
Joe. I've seen Travis.
Nope.
Nope.
I just was moving ahead.
So this was in your five-year plan, you said?
Yeah, we've put these five-year, or these culverts in our five-year plan the, the last two years.
And on your priority list, what level were they?
So this one, uh, the culvert that we're awarding, the, the work has already been done, um, and we checked with the state that is allowable. Um, so these were culverts that were washed out during the twenty nineteen, the year of twenty nineteen, so they're a pretty high priority.
Okay. I appreciate that, Joe. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Move to award the Rural Access Infrastructure Funding to the Pennington County Highway Department for Willsey Road Small Structures fifty-two dash nine seven one five dash zero four five two, fifty-two dash nine seven one seven dash zero four five one, and fifty-two ninety-seven eighteen dash zero four five one, and then, and then not exceed amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Moved by Lester, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Now we have items from Building Committee, the Building, and I'll recognize, uh, David Purcell again, and?
Kevin Burton, Construction Manager. So, um, as we brought up last time, um, at our last meeting, uh, we, the Building Committee had recommended that we ask for three hundred thousand, um, for discretionary spending to start some rehab of the First Interstate Bank property that we bought. Um, we have received a few, uh, bids back on several of the other, um, items that we need, um, storefronts, um, HVAC control, and a few other things, and it's right around a hundred, or two hundred thousand dollars of that three hundred thousand. So we're still waiting on some prices from JCI, and, um, that will allow us to get started on awarding some of those contracts and getting us closer to moving in. So today, we're asking for a motion to, um, approve, to, uh, give Davis Purcell the signing authority of the three hundred thousand so that we can move some of those projects forward.
Thank you, Kevin. Do you have any comments, David?
No, we'll stand for any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms., Mr. Drews.
I don't really have any questions, but I think as part of the Building Committee, uh, we felt that this was the most, uh, effective and efficient way of, uh, moving forward of this, was giving the spending authority for some of these projects, because I know that, uh, Buildings And Grounds can do and plan on doing quite a bit of the work for their own area in there. So, uh, I think this is very effective, Major.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
For me, I'll be saying no, not because David, our Superintendent, uh, Purcell and Kevin don't do a great job, and I do trust them, um, at their job. It's, I don't think buying another building is efficient and effective for the, taking off the tax rolls of Pennington County, another building. So I'm going to have to disagree with, uh, buying the building. So in that case, I'm going to have to disagree with, uh, um, any kind of discretionary spending on it.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to authorize Davis Purcell, Building And Grounds Director, spending authority of three hundred thousand dollars from capital project funds for the initial renovation of the newly acquired property located at fourteen St. Joseph Street with the understanding that all procurement will follow South Dakota procurement rules. Any summary of all expenditures will be made public.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Hagcock and Lester? No. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Next, that brings us up to Item Number Twenty, and this is an item from Convention Manager Holly Hennies, the annual review and update of the bylaws, rules, and procedures. Ms. Sanders.
Commissioners, today I have one request. This is the time of the year that our bylaws and rules of procedures, um, direct a review. I have just one recommended change that I would ask the board consider. Uh, this is a revision in Article Four slash Meetings within Section four-three to bring us into alignment with the language used in South Dakota Codeified Law one dash twenty-five dash one, um, which is for public comment period.
Thank you, Holly.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Holly, I have a question on this. I, I paid attention to this whenever, uh, it was going through the state legislature and whatnot. Is this, the, every official meeting, I understand that piece, but, uh, the other highlighted piece, as to the time allowed for each topic and the total time allowed for public comment, was that also within that legislative document that said it needs to be?
Word for word from the statute, sir.
Okay, so that's basically word for word from the statute to make sure that we're in compliance. Okay.
Correct.
Chair.
You done, Mr. Lester?
Yeah.
Ms. Hagcock.
I would have, I don't have a, in fact, I looked it up, Travis, after, um, I had talked to you about, um, the public comment on some of the stuff on board's discretion, and I thought that at one point, they had said that the public, um, we didn't have to put it on the agenda. I don't know if that was years ago or what, but, um, the issue I have is when we're having public comment, which is a good thing, that if there's more, if there's three to five people, or even a number of people that have a subject that keep coming up to every public comment, maybe we should put it on the agenda. Instead of having them come to every public comment and time them three to five minutes, why don't we just start making an agenda item when that comes up instead of having them, having people to have to come, um, on public comment? That's just a suggestion. Um, instead of limiting the time, um, making it a certain topic, and then, uh, making it under public comment. Those are my suggestions.
Any further comments from the Commission?
By the way, I'd like to thank Holly for looking this up and finding the state rules and regs on this, and that is, is correct, and it does follow for our process for Robert's Rules Board. Thank you.
Any further comment from the board? If not, I'd look to the board for a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the revision with Section four dash, or four point three in the bylaws and rules of procedure as presented.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, this brings us up to Item B, and I do, once you present, Holly, I do have a speaker request form.
Yeah, Commissioners, Item B is a request for spending authority. Um, it was brought to our attention that, uh, we have two individuals retiring mid-year this year. Um, the Honorable Presiding Judge Craig Fifeley and, um, Honorable Judge Jane Withfifeley will be retiring mid-twenty-four. Um, it was suggested that, uh, the county provide them with, uh, recognition gift in, um, honor of their commitment to the county and being a valuable partner and asset to us and our relationship with the court system. Um, so with that, today I'm in front of you to request spending authority, um, to provide them with that recognition gift.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I just have a question, and my question, you know, I've dealt with gifts coming from and going to entities or individuals, you know, all my DOD time and everything, and it's pretty, it's frowned upon, but maybe a unit can do it. Um, and I guess my question is, from the county's perspective, is that a standard that we're seeing for anyone who's spent that amount of time in the county and in a, in a leadership position for that long, or is that the amount that we've kind of established as a set amount? I mean, we've had other individuals that have been part of the county for many years, and I just want to know, are we, are we treating all the, the employees or those individuals the same way with the same amount?
The county, Mr. Chair, the county has a recognition policy for employees. This is in front of the board because they are not county employees, so this would require special approval from the board. Um, this dollar amount is not in line with that policy. Um, we obviously respect the taxpayer dollars and are gonna, um, try and do it as, as reasonable as we can. Um, this was just an estimate for the idea that we had.
Mr. Chair, follow-up. What's, what would it be in line with if it was to be in line with our county policy?
I apologize, sir. I did not bring that policy in front of me. I want to say, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding. I'd rather be in line with our policy rather than exceed that, in my opinion, but go ahead, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I'm done.
Okay, I, I will ask one question from, from our Sheriff Mueller. When we give the, the guns to retired service, what, what's the normal cost of those? Because I think it's right, I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, good morning. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. When we, uh, our policy allows for gifting the, their duty-issued firearm in there right around four hundred dollars, and that's for twenty-year-plus employees.
Okay.
Finish twenty years.
Thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
Hi, Mr. Travis. If the policy says three hundred, it's three hundred, but we also are talking about county employees. We're not talking about state employees. Um, with all due respect, these two presiding judges are amazing judges and have done a lot for, um, our Pennington County, but they also are state employees. So our policy doesn't have policy for state employees, and to give somebody that's not even an employee of Pennington County, let alone they're a state employee, an exception to that policy, I believe, is not going to go well with, uh, with the rest of the employees that have been retiring and do not get the same treatment as somebody else that would be, uh, retiring. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any further comment from the Commission? With that, I'll go to the speaker request form. Uh, I'll recognize Jerry Dur.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, and happy new year, and I hope the year is really a blessed one for you and the county. So the comment, you know, obviously, uh, I think you guys are on topic anyway, but I think the, you know, the motion is a thousand dollars expenditures for two individuals, uh, that have done service to the county, but they are now county employees, and it's kind of my take on this. I've been in county government a long time in different positions, but, uh, you know, when it comes to giving gifts of taxpayer funds, the legislature obviously allows that, and you have the budgetary authority to do that, uh, but I would question giving a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars, to individuals that have represented the county and the state but are not county employees. And remember, you know, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars here, it all adds up. And, uh, I, as an employee, uh, would look at it and say that it should be, if you're going to do something, and you're going to do something outside of the organization, that it'd be in line with what you're doing within the organization and to keep it the same. So I just think they're state employees paid by the state, and the state, I'm sure, is going to honor them and thank them for their service, and there's other ways to do that. Uh, I've been involved in this gift-giving for employees that have been leaving, and I've always had the mindset that if they're that valued and you care that much, that you pass the hat, and that collectively you come together and say, we want to acknowledge this, but we're not going to spend taxpayer funds. We're going to use our own funds. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
I think that's a good suggestion, because I think these two individuals, we have a lot of respect for them on this board, that if we're going to give money, um, and we respect them that much, that maybe, um, the issue, I think Mr. Dur said, would be pass the hat, and I think a lot of people would give. I also believe the state, um, is giving them probably a party or something of their recognition that we could maybe add to something that they're giving as Commissioners, but not as, uh, from the taxpayer dollars. So I think that's a positive idea.
Any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Hagcock and Lassiter that, uh, I'm all for passing the hat, and I'll be the first one to contribute, but, uh, I guess we're being watched how we spend county money, so it is what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Roskin. Any further comments? My, my comment would be is, I like Mr. Dur's idea, and I'd be the first one to offer up a hundred dollars for the fund. So, um, that's just my comment. So I'd look to the board for, this was a suggested motion, uh, for a motion from the board.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Mr. Lester to deny the authorization of spending of a thousand dollars of commission budget for retirement recognition gift for President, ziting Judge Greg Vifel and Jane Vifel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That brings us up to Item Twenty-one, Approval Of The Vouchers.
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Hagcock and seconded by Lester to approve one million, two hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety cents, uh, for the vouchers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, this brings us up to items from the Chair and Commission Members.
Chair.
Hold on.
We're going to read it. I'm sorry. I didn't know you were going to read it.
Yeah. This is a time for individual members to bring forth ideas and concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Uh, direction may be given to bring back items back before the board commission for future consideration. This is what this item is for. Ms. Hagcock.
So just again, reiterating, um, it was, I think, watching the public and the public comment, um, that we have done a good job by our bylaws, but I think, again, we could look into putting, um, items on the agenda from the public that keep being brought up every week, um, because we are not, I don't know if that's a word, I'm not going to use that word, um, that we need to bring up on an agenda item. So I would suggest that we look into doing that, um, when we have those people keep coming up as public, uh, as the public entities, um, moving it forward into agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I was going to follow up on that, but, you know, we've seen it many a times during public comment in the last, uh, couple of months of citizens coming forward, and we did talk about, um, putting the Second Amendment issue on the agenda, and I'd like to, uh, see if there's any follow-up on when we're going to be able to put that on the agenda for the public to have a discussion.
Absolutely. Underneath reports, I will give a report on that. Mr. Roskin and myself did meet with, uh, the Fair Board President in Ron Jeffries, and we gave us an update to give. So under reports, I'll, I'll give a report.
Okay.
Any further items from Chair or Commission Members? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item Number Twenty-three, and this is Meetings, Committee Reports, and Scheduled Meetings By Commissioners. And I'll start out with Ms. Hagcock.
Yes, on Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, I did call Brian ahead of time. He knew I wasn't going to be there. Um, I was going on vacation for a couple of days, um, so I wasn't there at the meeting.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Roskin.
Okay, relative to the Pennington County Housing Redevelopment meeting, uh, during the meeting, we, uh, talked about following the award of relocation services contract by the board at the November meeting. Payment terms were negotiated with a consultant who are acceptable to the Housing Authority's attorney. Now that the Housing Authority is getting much closer to submitting its application Now that the Housing Authority is getting much closer to submitting its application to HUD for the Section 18 disposition, work is going to begin on the rental assistance demonstration or otherwise known as RAD applications for the three high rises. The strategy that we're going to be utilizing will be defined after receiving technical assistance from HUD hopefully by the end of January 2024. The Housing Authority's annual audit has been accepted by HUD. The board approved the 2024 PHA plan along with the required HUD certifications, and the board approved the five-year capital fund plan along with required HUD certifications. The board did approve the fiscal year and 2025 budget for the Sunny Haven Apartments, which are located in New Wonderwood. The board awarded the contract for modernization worked for three high rises. This work will be completed in the mechanical rooms with the purpose of updating control systems in these 50-year-old buildings. The board approved the succession plan for the Housing Authority's controller. The current controller is scheduled to retire in February 2025. The board did discuss fiscal year ending 2025 budgets for the central administration, public housing AMP 11 elderly and public housing AMP 16, which is family. The board will be asked to approve them at the March 2024 meeting. That is my report.
Thank you, Ron. My report is on complete health. And at our meeting, we discussed probably the same thing as 4H, is finding enough members to fulfill the board. Right now, we're right at the minimum required for voting, so every person present has to be there to make any decisions to vote. And so, we are doing a campaign to try to get more people to participate into the board of community health. Right now, we're at the very minimum. And then, the rest of the business was pretty minimal. It was just regular budgetary type stuff. But they did bring up that they are getting a review from their federal grants. And so, somebody will be here to walk through the facility, and we'll talk to not only people who use community health, but also the board of community health and the workers. So, that'll be coming probably in February or so. So, with that, that was, is my presentation on that. But I also do have a report, you know, as Mr. Lassiter said, we've had the Second Amendment stuff come up quite a bit with people coming forward. So, it was thought best to meet with the Central State Fair Board and the manager of that, Jerry and Ron Jeffries. And so, Ron, Rosskin, Vice Chair, and myself met with them over the weekend and to have discussions to see where they're at with this, because we've had so much public comment coming forward on that and see, you know, whether they can come forward or not. And the discussion was is that they turned this over to their facilities committee, what they call the facilities and safety committees where they turned it over to. And they expect a recommendation back in May is what their recommendation. Because we, I told them, we explained a lot of the public comment that we're getting, and we wasn't sure where they were at with it. And that's what they come up with. And so, they also stated that they are working with Mr. Mueller on some other recommendations that they're expecting probably back later on in January. But they also did want to thank Mr. Mueller for all his hard work. He said, this last one, that she actually involved Rapid City PD with the favor this year and so forth. And so, that's what they're, the comments that they said, they're talking in May because of the Christmas and with the rodeo coming up in January. They wanted to give that committee a time to come back with recommendations and come forward to the board. But they wanted to gather their information and have it all ready and so we could have that discussion on at the same time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr.
If you don't mind me asking a question, did y'all discuss whether or not they're going to have a policy that would restrict citizens' rights? Or is that a no-go for them, that they're not going to continue that policy?
They are in discussions with the whole bomb package. They want to have that discussion, and that committee will bring it. Once they're ready to come forward, they will bring it to us, and what they figured in late May.
So, follow-up, so we don't know what their position is still currently with the way they had a policy that individuals have concerns about violating citizens' rights?
That wasn't part of the discussion. Discussion was to bring them to the board to have the open discussion, and they wanted to do their research before they come forward. They do have, I like to look at it as there's options. Number one is to, is take, you know, pretty much do nothing. Or, number two, they could keep doing what they're doing with the metal detectors and so forth. Number three is they could do a revised recommendation of how they want to proceed. But they are working on it. I mean, so there's no set policy that they're bringing forward because there's still research of it.
And then, final follow-up, if you don't mind. If they choose a policy that violates citizens' rights, what are we going to do? Are we going to take a stand against that? Are we going to come out with a recommendation to say, "We won't continue business if you do this"?
I think that's going to be the question of this board when they come forward. I can't answer that.
Chair, I have a question about that.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Ms. Hagcock.
So, I respect that Commissioner Drews, or Commissioner Roskin and Commissioner LaCroy went to visit with the fairgrounds. But what I disagree with is because Travis Lassiter was, in the beginning, involved with this, working with the fairgrounds, working with the facilities committee, working on this to find a solution. And when that solution didn't seem that Mr. Lassiter, because he disagreed, he was discounted in those discussions at that point. I think that did a disservice to the citizens, let alone the fairgrounds, having a commissioner that actually had a passion for what they were talking about and wanted to make a difference with solution, and then discounted him. And now, we are here where we're at today. And to give us one, two, three things that could happen, seems like it's pretty unfair to a commissioner that did the work on this. So, in the future, I would hope that they would be more respectful to our commissioner and our commissioners that disagree with them. So, at this point, I think that solution would have been made. Being that Commissioner Lassiter knew what he was talking about, went to the state, actually, to pass laws on those areas. I can agree to disagree with some of the things that happened, and I understand that. And mistakes were made. But, again, the solution could have been made a lot simpler if you would have just worked with the commissioner and not worked against the issue. That was, could have been simplified and done by now. So, those are my comments.
This is a report, and I made those decisions to meet with them because, oh, the public comment that had come up forward. So, we're getting, you know, a lot of back and forth. So, it was best to have hear from their side from us. So, that was the discussion.
And Commissioner, I respected.
And that's why I wanted to come up with a date of when to bring it forward and so I could communicate to the public, okay, they're working on it, this is the date. That was the whole purpose.
Well, Chair, that's why I said what I said, is because I respected the chair and the vice chair going there. But when you discount another commissioner that's been working on that, I think the solution would have been way done before May. So, I appreciate your report. But I also think that my opinion is something that I was the representative for that board. And I also made the same mistake, believing something else that would have happened because of that. So, those are my opinions, and I appreciate, like I said, I respect what you're talking about, Commissioner LaCroy, but I also think it goes both ways.
Okay. Next reporter is Mr. Drews.
Okay, Elevate Board of Directors did not have a meeting. That was the executive board that met. The compensation committee did have a meeting in January, December 26, I'm sorry. And a couple of things that came out of that. Joe Miller shared at that that the scoring matrix was presented to department heads, and it was well received with positive feedback. Once all positions are scored, then the market analysis can be done. And so, that will be, at some point in time in the future, still shooting, I think, for March for that to come to the commission. But at the same time, there's a lot of work that needs to be completed in the meantime so that that's all put together in one package rather than pieces and parts over a period of time. Also, Net Brand clarified on the benefits. If you remember, at the last meeting, we had that chart that showed the, the number of years that you'd have to have in order to get a certain amount of vacation accrual. And there was one, in one of those charts, there was a typographical error on the four- to five-year range that showed 4.62 hours, and it should have been 5.62. So, that was the only clarification that needed to be on that. Cindy Moller pointed out that the trust board made a motion in August to remove the option for dependent spouses to remain on the plan after the employee ages out, which will take effect at the end of '24. So, if an employee had their spouse on their plan and are now retired, and if they age out, if that employee ages out, their employee will no longer be entitled to that, to any benefit, retiree benefits after that point in time. And Joe Miller also pointed out another motion that was made by the Healthcare Trust Board that anyone hired now after January 1 of 2024 would not have the option to join the retiree healthcare plan. That is being eliminated. Current ones that are on will remain. But there's no new employees that will be coming on that will be given any kind of assurance or opportunity for a retiree health plan in the future. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
Chair, can I ask a question to Mr. Drews?
Sure.
Tell me why the Health Board did the no-retiree. I'm sure there's a good reason, because you guys vent everything, but can you tell me why?
Well, part of the discussion on that was, is that that was part of the financial issue that the Healthcare Trust Board had. And so, they just, they chose to determine that, you're talking about in the future ones?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Just chose that that should be a program that ends. And so, they selected the date of January 1, 2024 for that to end, so it will no longer be available.
It ends because we have all the other benefits because of, okay.
True.
Because we did the accrual, and we did some other changes to our policies on compensation, that that's no longer needed.
Well, and I think the research showed that that was a financial drain on the system that we just couldn't sustain.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Commissioner Drews.
Mr. Lassiter, you have anything? Okay. Items, I don't have any more speaker request forms, but this is the time for items from public per SDCL 125-1. As long as you have a speaker request form as required, then this is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commission on Policies and Issues Affecting County Government and Its Function. Action will not be taken on this. These items or any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed, speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. As I said, I have none. So, we'll move on to, we'll need to take a recess to set up for items from planning and zoning for Board of Adjustment that starts at 10:30. So, I'd look for a motion to take a break until 10:30.
Do on the recess until 10:30.
Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll come back into session. This brings us into items from planning and zoning. The commission utilizes speaker request forms. So, if you have any, would you like to speak on any item? Please complete a speaker request form located at the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return to the commission manager, Holly Haines, located at the lower right side. I do have two speaker request forms right now so far for 25A. But with that, we'll start with the motion to go into the Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews to go into Board of Adjustment. Any discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, that brings us up to item 25A, and I'll recognize Jason.
Morning, commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Item A is variance 23-15 to allow more than 40 dwellings on a dead-end road system. If you recall, this item was in front of you before. It was denied without prejudice on November 21 of last year. The applicant is Jeffrey and Mary, or Jeffrey and Mary Mars. Property is located at 8550 Countryside Boulevard. It is 40 acres. Currently zoned suburban residential district access is off Countryside Boulevard, and there's no special flood hazard area. Just a refresher from the last time. These are the Prong One considerations that we take into account when basing our recommendations. Would you like me to run through the entire staff report to refresh memories?
Do you want to read through each one? We went through this last meeting.
I think I read them, if you're asking me.
I'm good. Okay.
I think we're good.
I'll just move forward with the update then. On November 21 of last year, this item, again, it was heard for the Board of Adjustment and was denied without prejudice. December 12 of last year, staff, the deputy state's attorney, and the applicant's agent attended a meeting with the adjacent property owner's legal counsel. The adjacent property owner's legal counsel stated that his client has no desire to grant access across their property by any means. That would be this portion of property to the east. If you recall, that would have provided an access to connect Dunsborough to Countryside. Staff still recommends no further development occur in this area until a secondary means of ingress or regress is established. With that, staff recommends denial of variance 23-15 as a discounter to the public safety and public interest. And there are no special conditions on the subject property that would support approval.
Is there any questions for Jason?
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, Jason, if access were to be made at the, in the Dunsborough there, how much, how big of an area is that that would need to connect?
I believe it's 60 feet across east-west, and then 15 feet north-south. Actually, I think I have that mixed up. It'd be 60 feet north-south, 50 feet east-west.
So, how much, when I'm looking at this with the Dunsborough Road and that one property, is there an easement already there for the road, just a small section that's not?
Correct. Yep. What you're looking at here on the screen is the easement that is platted or that is on file with the Register of Deeds. This portion of property that we're discussing here is not a right-of-way.
That's a 60-foot area, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
A question for Jason, maybe he doesn't know it. It says on their Black Hills area, the neighborhood is located within the Black Hills area Fire Protection District established by state law 34-35-15. On their fire protection, a lot of times, and it says, "Due to area being subject to unusual fire dangers." I thought in the fire districts, a lot of times, they, I don't know how well they fight the fires in there. I was, I was hoping that Jerome Harvey was here about the fire protection, because a lot of times, I thought that, again, they, I can't say they just let the fire in there burn, but they do a lot of burning and different stuff in those areas as well. So, my concern, Jason, was, is there anything in the Black Hills area fire protection by state law that's going to make a difference for or against on this property that you have concerns about?
Right. And I did research that. I didn't find anything in there that would restrict it based on that state law. But we did receive some concerns and comments from the Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department, as well as Jerome Harvey, and those are in the staff report.
Okay. And that's why I said, as I saw that, and maybe that's more, what I'm leaning towards is that this would be, not be in favor of this due to poor water availability. Areas already concerned for fire district, and by adding to the congested number of homes would create a hazard during a wildfire. Again, it's right next to the Black Hills area Fire Protection District, which I think a lot of times, it's not as protected as I thought it would be in some of the areas being on the fire board as the neighborhoods in the different areas. Plus, again, water availability to fight it, let alone the homes that are in that area, or poor water availability just to fight it in the Black Hills area fire protection. Being that there's an area that's subject to unusual fire dangers, that this would be a liability, I think, to, for the county even to approve this.
Okay. You done, Deb?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drews.
So, Jason, the Whispering Pines Fire Department, is that right, adjacent to Sheridan Lake Road?
It is.
Okay. Is there another one in Countryside South? Is there another one in Countryside South?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any further questions? Okay. My, I took some notes when I, when I got down some of the struggles, when I was reading through all the emails that we'd gotten and concerns. I think, you know, a lot of times when these letters are sent out, they automatically thought there was a 40 units going in, and it's 11 that they're requesting. So I just wanted to clarify that. And one other question I had, Jason, is, you know, there's, there's some problems with the Homeward Association Road just because that's something that they'd work out, but I was looking at Bing Drive, and Bing Drive doesn't consider a second access for, is that for certain areas, but the rest it does not? Or when you look at Bing Drive, it looks like there's connection over to Sheridan Lake It's hard to see on this, but.
Right. Yep.
Which road is it you're talking about?
Bing Drive.
So when I analyzed this, I went from Doubletree, where Countryside and Doubletree intersect, and that's where I began counting the 40 units.
Forty units, okay.
And that's where I found it'd be exceeded because there is no secondary means of access from that intersection to the south.
Okay. Yeah. Because I, I seen a Coniferne Lane is, looks like there's an access to Bing. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Yeah, I didn't see any legal means of access, any platted right-of-way or anything like that from Bing leading over to the subdivision.
Okay. That was my only question, Mr. Roskinet.
Jason, were you part of the Zoom meeting with the adjacent property owner's attorney and, and the trying to purchase that property so they could continue the, from Dunsmore, the Countryside, that said there was, were you part of that?
Yes, I was.
And so it was a hard no?
Yes.
Did they mention why it was a hard no?
Didn't really add too many reasons to it. They just said they didn't want access across there. They stated that pedestrian traffic on Dunsmore, lack of sidewalks, they felt it would create a hazard.
Okay.
My, my only other comment on not giving that access to the rest of that easement is I think this commission is, I have said before, if you don't want development to happen by the property, Jason, or something along those lines. So the person who owns that strip that doesn't want to give up that property, doesn't want development going in. Could that be fair to say?
It would appear that way.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
One, one last question. Mentions also that there's a suggestion that the county condemn the access to Dunsmore. You probably don't know the answer to that, but I'm curious to see if there's even a process to do that.
I would defer to the State's Attorney's Office for that one.
I won't do so.
I saw all the grins over here.
Thank you. Alexa Muller, Deputy State's Attorney, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. There is a process for condemnation. I can tell this board that I am by no means an expert in condemnation. It is a quite lengthy process. There's a lot of things to do on our backend for the board, and then we have to go to court proceedings. I think there's at least two of them. It takes at minimum one calendar year to get that moving, and at this point, we're not necessarily recommending that.
But to start the process, you have to have a reason behind the process, and that's where I'm having a problem. Is there a reason right now, if we didn't do that, is that going to impact public safety in any manner? And I don't see that happening.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Roskinet, can you rephrase your question?
So my question was, if you're going to start the process condemn, you've got to have a reason to do that, and I don't, I don't see the reason right now unless I'm mistaken something.
Mr. Chair, yes, I agree with that. At this point, we do not see that there is a reason to start a condemnation process.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission before I go to the speaker requests? Okay, thanks, Jason. The speaker requests, I do have TJ. And TJ, you are the representative of Mike, right?
TJ Batano is representing the Mars.
Okay.
So I emailed all of you guys just some bullet points of, you know, what has gone on in the last, since November, since you guys denied it without prejudice. I guess the only other thing that I want to add to that is in this area that we're building, there's very little trees, and all these lots are going to be more than .74 acres, making them further apart than all the current houses in Countryside, less fire danger, and then obviously the fire suppression systems in the house, making them safer than all the other 103 houses that were currently approved to be in Countryside. And I guess if there's no reason to condemn it, then why is everybody so worried about fire safety issue? If they're not worried about it with the other 103 houses, what does 12 add to that? Well, that will all have fire suppression systems. Obviously, those houses are going to be safer than the other ones that are currently there. And water availability, I believe Colonial Pines, I think Jim is here, he would have to speak to the water availability for the fire department. All of these 12 houses would have holding tanks in the basement, which would put those fire suppressions in. So he would have to talk about these high-pressure water lines that are currently in place. I just, there's a lot of back and forth between what should happen and what could happen, but if there's not an issue, why are we not approving it today? So.
Thanks, TJ. Is there any questions for TJ from?
TJ.
Ms. Hagcock.
Number one, we tried to do some 40-unit rule in Bradsky, we denied, and it was for actually lesser reasons than this is today. So to me, I think we need to do something in the future with the 40-unit rule, maybe make it public safety, health, welfare, all that other stuff, and change some of that. But at this point, based on the, like you said, the Black Hills Forest Service being right next to you, you already said, there's already a safety issue already with the other houses not being fire sprinkling, adding 12 more to that issue, and also denying other people in other districts for that 40-unit rule for the same reason, maybe even less. That's the reason why I can't approve this today, TJ.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Laster.
TJ, I think you heard me last time. I've been a pretty, and if you watch my history, I've been a pretty stickler no, even sometimes whenever we've all disagreed on the 40-unit rule, I've been a pretty consistent no on that. So, and I told you what it would take for me to get that access through there. If we get that access in there, across there, then I think it opens that whole area up. I'm kind of disappointed that somebody in that area is unwilling to help. Let's make it safer for everybody in the community so they can all egress if they need to egress. That's kind of where now I stand, was kind of disappointed in that, in that mindset. I understand wanting to preserve what you have because you purchased, you grew an area in a certain manner, but there's a point in time where you've got to look at it and say, okay, well, it's kind of gone past, it's, you know, what we intended it for, and now there's a lot of other things going on. Let's take that into consideration. So, you know, I'm willing to help move forward if there's something that we can do to open up another pathway out of there, but I'm a no unless that happens.
Mr. Chair. TJ, you know, I'm pro-development, I really am, but I don't think there's, there's another element that we're not looking at, and that's the quality of life. And there's a lot of folks in the audience right there, and I'm sure they're concerned about safety, but they're also concerned about their quality of life and what it was that they bought into when they bought their home. So I have to take that into consideration in trying to make a decision today, but I appreciate all the work that you, work and efforts that you put forth trying to find a solution, and solution might be out there, but I just also have to listen to the property owners out in that area.
Yeah, and I think that was part of our reasoning in the bigger lots was to adhere to what's already in that community, which these lots would be almost twice the size as the current lots out there. So we did take that in consideration as well.
Is there any further comments, Mr. Drews?
So TJ, I, I went out and did look at the area, and I, I think I can kind of see the, the vision that's being planned for that area, and nothing wrong with what your proposal is. I have to come down on the side of safety at this point with the 40-unit rule, and I, I do also think it would be, be nice to be able to have that other access coming across there. I don't see that happening in the near future, and so I'm going to have to be opposed to what you're proposing per se, but if there's another, another avenue of getting access in and out of there, I would certainly be in favor of it.
Thank you. I, I do have one question. What would it take for this board to get behind condemnation of the adjoining property owner's land, being that there's already 103 units that would utilize this fire safety?
Well, you're asking five, five people with five different opinions, so that's pretty tough, tough call.
So Chair, can I ask Jason a question, why TJ's up there? Maybe that might help some TJ's answer. So Jason, is there any other area that he could build a road? Or could a different road be built somewhere else in order to access? It's going to be all three of these properties are in the future. These are some pretty huge properties to not be able to build anything on because of second access. Is there anywhere else that we could get that second access for TJ, or he could get for his property in order to move forward?
Possibly a connection to the west. I'm not really sure. I didn't really look at too many other options to, to figure it out because this is where the major street plan says the road is supposed to go.
Okay. So I would ask TJ and this board also not to deny this without prejudice again, so doesn't look like you have the votes, that's my opinion, sir, is to see if you can figure out if there is somewhere that you could put a second access, because those other lots, I don't know if you own those or somebody else does, they're going to need access as well in order to do their properties, obviously. So if we deny without prejudice, maybe you could work on trying to see if there's another access point to get that, that second access for safety in order to provide comfort probably for the citizens and as well this board.
Sure.
Just my opinion.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
So with that being said, to deny without prejudice would go for about a year, am I correct? And then they'd have to reapply, start over, so it, so really it gives them another option to, if he could find it, he could bring it forward, be fine, but at the end of that year, he'd have to reapply, start over.
So that'd be my motion.
I do have another speaker.
I'm sorry. I apologize, sir.
Want to wait till others? Okay. We do have another speaker request form from Eugene Craft. Is it Croft or Craft?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Eugene.
Well, what I was going to speak about was pretty much already covered.
Eugene, you just need to identify yourself for the record.
Eugene Craft.
That's good.
Address 5319 Scrub O Circle. I live right next to this property. But I was just curious of what had changed between last meeting and this, and it doesn't sound like anything has changed. It's, there's never been any more approval of anything. The access hasn't been granted. And I guess you were out to that property. I don't know if any of the rest of you were, but you can see on that up there where Mars House is, there on the south side slope of that hill, this property runs north to south. It's low, it goes uphill from the north over the hill and drops down. Where they live, they're not even close to where this construction is going to be. They won't even see any of it from their house. No inconvenience to them at all, but it'll be a big inconvenience to the people who live along Countryside Boulevard and the rest of that area out there. That's a narrow street. People walk it every day. So the safety issue is pretty large, I think. The other thing was the equipment, heavy equipment would have to be brought in there. All has to come on that. That's a residential street, that's not a road. It's a narrow residential street. Houses are like 30, 40 feet away from the edge of that street. All that traffic's just right past their house, and you saw that when you were out there. So that's another safety issue. And if they put in streets on, on that development, they're going to have to haul in probably a lot of gravel for a base to put that asphalt on. All those loads got to come down Countryside Boulevard, and it's going to damage that street. I just, those are heavy loads, 40,000 pound loads. They're not designed for that. So that pretty much covers what I have to say about it. There's just, I don't see any, any way you can approve this. It's just not right. They want to make a big profit on that property, and they don't want to pay anything for it, and they don't want to be disturbed while it's being done. And that's just not right. So.
Thanks, Eugene.
That's all I got to say.
Go back to the board. That's the last four speaker request forms. Ms. Hagcock?
Deny without prejudice would be my motion, sir.
Same.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter to deny without prejudice. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us up to item B.
Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item B is variance 23-17 to reduce the setback to the east property line for an existing structure on the subject property. The applicants are Keith and Jan Hogue. Location of the property is 13640 South Highway 16. It is 2.62 acres, currently zoned Highway Service District. Existing land uses, commercial access is off South Highway 16, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Staff does take a two-prong approach when basing their considerations. They are on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. Requested setback is 8.7 feet from the side property line. This gives little buffer between the community, or the commercial use and the residence. This could negatively impact the neighborhood. Number two, it appears that existing structures in the neighborhood meet the required setbacks. Number three, Highway Service zoning districts require a 30-foot setback from property lines that abut residential zoning districts and a 10-foot setback to all other zoning districts. Number four, future land use of the property is Highway Service, which requires the same setbacks. And lastly, number five, the requested setback is 8.7 feet. It should have minimal impact on safety, health, general welfare of the public. And then prong two down below. Number one, no special condition exists. The applicant could have built the structure with the required setbacks being that. I'll get into kind of the reasons why here shortly.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to, normally don't interrupt, but we do have a request from the applicant that they, they want a continuance. So I didn't want to let you.
Okay.
Keep going. I'll go to.
Yeah, we can do this all at the next meeting. It's fine.
Okay. Move to continue?
Okay, we got a motion to continue and a second from Lassiter, but I'll let Mr. Hague speak, he has, he does have a speaker request form.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you. Happy New Year to the commission. I do represent Mr. Hogue on, on the variance request. Because of some extenuating circumstances and so forth, I think they'd be more fully explored. Also, my client is undergoing treatment for cancer right now, so he's not able to be here. I'm representing him in his stead, but I appreciate the continuance on the matter, and I'm simply asking for a continuous to the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
So we do have a motion on the floor for a continuance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Hague, let me, let me reclarify that to the next meeting?
Yes, that would be sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'll work. I'd look for a motion to come out of Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter.
Correct.
Seconded by Drews. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, that brings us up to. Next, that brings us up to the consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners use, oh, I'll let, I'll let you.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial, anointing planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item C is the Hard Rock Mining Research Update, and I do believe that there was some information in your packet, and staff is recommending that you accept the information.
Moved by Ms. Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I know we asked for this, I'm, I'm just going to make sure I'm understanding, it's this packet that we were given. All right. So, I know when we had the discussion about it, I know we, we asked for a thorough research and appreciated, Alexa, I started trying to read through some of this, but is there going to be like a synopsis for the public that we could put out? I know, because that's part of what I was hoping to get out of this, a synopsis that we can let the public be aware so that they can understand some of the stuff that, you know, when we're looking at this, what, how we have to make our, our decisions based on.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lassiter, Alexa Muller, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. I wanted to provide a comprehensive memo for the board so that they could further understand the questions that they asked at our special planning session. As I indicated in my memo, that would be a part of your packet. I am working with the planning department on a sort of flow chart to illustrate who has the powers to do what, and I believe that would be appropriate to make public, if that does answer your question, Commissioner Lassiter.
Yep.
Thank you. Now, I want to clarify, oh, you got a question, Alexa?
Yeah. I just didn't want her to sit down yet before. I have little legs, so. And I, I did say this off the record, but I like to say it on, this is a lot of work. It's a lot of research, and being on one of the mining committees before, Brittany's over there, so, you did a lot of work, and that's well appreciated. It must have took you hours and hours to do this, because that's a lot of work, but thank you, Alexis, and, and thank you for taking care of our planning department as well as you do. So, you've done excellent work, and this is just more to say the research and the things that the State's Attorney's Office does, does a lot of work for, not only this commission, but our planning department as well. So, thank you, Ms. Alexa.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagcock.
I just want to clarify with Brittany. So, the flow chart that you're working on with Brittany and them, are you going to have completed and out to the council and to the public? But we have a special meeting on this for January, scheduled for January 31st.
Correct. It's my intention to have that completed prior to the special planning session so that it can be made available to the board and to the public.
I just wanted to say that out loud so those who are tuning in hear that date, because a lot of times people don't read through the attachment. So, January 31st, we'll have a special meeting to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alexa. Is there any further discussions? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion, I think, oh, no, we got a motion from Ms. Hagcock and Lassiter for approval of the consent agenda. No further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. At this time, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I clarify something, Chair?
Sure.
You said a motion on, to clarify, for the consent agenda, did you mean for the Hard Rock Mining stuff?
Yeah, the Hard Rock, they only had one on there, which is the Hard Rock Mine. So, the date is for January 6th.
Okay, thank you.
So, motion to adjourn, who was, who made the motion?
So moved.
Mr. Lassiter.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed, or adjourned.